It's good to be home, wonderful Jesus. Hallelujah, praise the Lord, God Almighty. I just arrived. Hallelujah. Let me just share with you a little bit about what happened in Thailand and what happened to me too. Hallelujah, oh praise the Lord. You know that the first day I arrive in Chiang Rai, my heart was so blessed because I saw the top medical specialist of the Philippines. I repeat again, he is the top medical specialist of the Philippines. He gave up his job, he gave up his position, and he was about to be promoted to become the director of the Medical Center in Manila. And he gave up everything, and he brought his family to Chiang Rai to serve God as a missionary. I say, "Lord, I want to shake this man's hand." There are two young teenagers, young people, you got to hear this. One of them fifteen years old, the other one seventeen years old. They served the Lord for two years in North Korea. And we asked them, "How does it like to be serving God in North Korea?" Where they had to stay in underground, you know, hidden before families, Christian families together in an apartment. And I asked them, I say, "What is it like for you, a fifteen-year-old and a seventeen-year-old kid? They are Koreans, South Koreans. What is it like for you to serve God in North Korea?" You know, the elder one, he cried and he said, "It is a privilege. It is an honor." I say, "What kind of people are these?" Young teenagers, you know, they are willing to sacrifice, they are willing to put their life on, you know, on the risk of death every day, serving God in North Korea. What an amazing testimony. And then I was able to meet with a retired Lieutenant General of the US Army. Hallelujah. And he's from Jacksonville, Florida, and he's in Chiang Rai. I say, "What are you doing here in Chiang Rai?" "I don't know. God just called me to come here and serve Him." And then from Chiang Rai, we went to this place called Prab, which is a four-hours drive, you know, in the remote areas of Thailand. And there, I was teaching in the Bible school, and in the Bible school, I'm going to show you guys photo in two weeks' time, maybe upload all the photos. I was so touched to see this. He is the Colonel of the Thai Army. Military again, Thai Army Colonel. And he said, "I just gave up my position in the military to join the Military School of God." You know, this are the kind of people that we don't see so often, you know, in Penang. But it's so blessed to see people like that, serving the Lord, giving their heart to Jesus. And some of them, they are toiling, they have a farm, they plant corns and things like that, and rice, and, you know, to sustain the mission field. And it was a wonderful, wonderful time, especially the last two nights, where we gathered all these pastors from the province and they came and... My God, hallelujah, God really break into that place and turn all these pastors around, upside down. And they say, "It's unnatural." It's unnatural, you know, on a Sunday, they have service, they are supposed to end lunchtime, but after lunch, they say, "Can we continue?" And the service ended at 3 o'clock on a Sunday, morning 9 o'clock until evening 3 o'clock. This is unusual and unnatural. And I want to tell you, Thailand is on fire. Thailand is on fire for Jesus. Oh, hallelujah. And I pray, I say, "Lord, let the same fire in Thailand come to Penang." Let the people be so hungry that they are willing to just even come to a service, and they will have unnatural encounters with God. Hallelujah, oh Lord. And, you know, it ministered to me so much. When I came back, I was on the aeroplane, I say, "Lord, I want to be on fire like all these missionaries who give up top positions in a marketplace to serve God." What an amazing testimony. Especially with that medical, he's one of the top medical specialists in Philippines. What a testimony. Entire family just moved to Chiang Rai and served God. Amazing, you know, it's a privilege to meet people like that. Teenagers serving God in North Korea, amazing testimonies, you know, hallelujah. And today, we also have an amazing testimony because this man, he also travels everywhere, hallelujah. Travels everywhere, not for holiday, you know, to serve the Lord, to minister the Word of God. And it's always a privilege that whenever he's in town, I want to gather, even though it's very impromptu, we didn't plan this, all right, but because I learned that he was in town. And so, hallelujah. Because the Dato is in town, so I had to come back. Praise God, hallelujah. And before we call Pastor Edwin to come up and minister to us, this is a principle that we all should practice, okay? And this honor, God, because Galatians chapter 6 says that we are to bless those who teach us the Word. We are to sow a seed to those who teach us, to those who bless us, minister to us in the Word. And so, I want to call the Ashes to come and let us just give an offering to bless Pastor Edwin's ministry because he travels, and we know that we need expenses in the ministry. You know, let us just give to the Lord as we bless Him today, and bless the ministry that this man has in the Lord, that he travels everywhere. And we are also going to Philippines together next month. Unite and ignite Philippines, hallelujah. And so, oh wonderful Jesus. So all this collection today will go to bless Pastor Edwin's ministry, hallelujah. Wonderful Jesus, so come, my brother. It's all yours. Hallelujah, praise God. Praise the Lord. I think this is the earliest and the fastest that I can hold a microphone. I think the last time was about 1 hour and 45 minutes. But this one was the fastest. It's less than 10 minutes this time. So it's good to be back, and thank you, Pastor. Yeah, this is impromptu, but I went to KL last Thursday. There's a few things happened there because I went to Beacon Hospital to pray for two families from Sulawesi, Indonesia, and Jakarta. So prayed for them, and I was there also to see my second daughter, who is in University Malaya. And she's on a second year taking law. And you know, University Malaya, the... I think the place where the students are staying is not enough. So there are new student, and the law student this year has increased so much that they have to be out of the campus, and they rented a condo with some friends from Sarawak. And my daughter says, "Daddy, you have to come." I said, "Why?" "You come and pray for our condo. We want to redeem and dedicate it for the Lord so that we sleep good, we have peace, and we study also easy." Wow, I said, "Okay, I have no complaint on that." So I negotiated with my wife, I said, "You go." "No, no, 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 you go." I said, "Why?" "Because she's so happy now in KK, because the elder one already graduated, and she's doing her champering in KK, and she's enjoying KK because she has the one at home." So she says, "Okay, you go now, you just go." Oh, so the father keep on going. But anyway, after doing that, then I was in KL until I came in today. And I suppose, not to be here, but I'm blessed because you have deputy pastor here for the youth, I think. That's Brother Felix, and he communicated with me, and I communicated with him. I said, "Hey, I'm in KL, you come over lah, come, come, come." I said, "Ya ga." I think first, huh, okay. So he is so faithful messaging me. I said, "Okay, I will just come and then fly back from Penang to KK. There is a direct flight now." So that's why I'm here, and it's good to be back, you know? It's good to be back and to see you all. But I know it is on the weekdays, so probably all our friends are having their good meals and family. So don't complain about the empty chairs, okay? Because it is like that. I just returned from the US about a Monday, speaking to three universities and much of the church and fellowship that they invited me. Your place is bigger. They have smaller place now, and not many people. But it's not that so much on the people that I want to, but when I always come back after the fellowship, I feel and sense the emptiness, like it's hollow, you know? Kosong. So I keep on asking the Lord, "What is it, Lord?" No answer. Yeah, no answer. And some of these pastors that invited, they are big, you know? They are internationally known. Yeah, and one of them is Benny Hin's top man, he's the Chief Assessor. Every time when I'm in LA, he can just bring me in and out of Benny Hin's office. So, but I was not able to see Benny this time, but he told me that Benny send his regards. Because every time when I'm in LA, Benny used to invite me to his place. But sometime, I'm engaged with ministry elsewhere, so I just go, you know? So anyway, I got back on the 5th of October and rested a few days back home. Then that weekend, I went to Sarawak, Kuching. We have a number of churches in Sarawak now. And in fact, last month alone, we started another two. And last week, not this Sunday, but the previous Sunday, we just baptized 28 people. Yeah, so when Pastor Terrence was saying about the fire in Thailand, I said, "Lord, send more to Sarawak and Sabah." Yeah, I, for one, like Pastor Terrence, we love fire. We love the excitement of the people in the kingdom, you know? Because through this, we will enjoy His presence, His glory, and we will enjoy His guidance and leadership and quality time of fellowship with Him. So we need that. Yeah, we need that. So praise God, you know? And we are in the exciting time now, yeah. So I go back next week. That Sunday again, we have another church anniversary. And then that next week again, I'll fly to Bintulu, another church anniversary. And then Monday, I fly back to KK. Then that week again, I'll fly to Manila, and then connecting flight to Pagadien, South Philippine, Mindanao, another church anniversary. So in November alone, we have three church anniversaries in the churches. So that is fire. So if you can start a church every month, three or four churches a month, imagine how many anniversary you will have the whole year, plus your wedding anniversary, plus your children's anniversary, so many. So every week or every day will be anniversary. Hallelujah, we have two, the big ones. That is Easter and Christmas. So imagine if the whole year round and week, we have always celebration in the Lord. Hallelujah. And I'm going to join Pastor Terrence in Baguio. While I was in the States, he invited that we do the first conference of the fire in the Philippines. And then the theme is very fiery also. Unite and ignite, and dynamite will happen, you know? Because in the book of Exodus, chapter 1, verse 8, "You will receive power," he says, "that is dynamite." Yeah. So if we are on fire for the Lord, imagine you are dynamite, you know? But make sure you don't bomb people all over the place, okay? You might get different feedback, and you might not like that. Yeah, but anyway, whether you like or you don't like, if Jesus likes it, it's good. You know, we must always make sure that Jesus loves and He likes it, hallelujah. And thank you so much for having me here tonight, and I believe we're gonna enjoy the night together. Hallelujah. Yeah. It's so good always having time and sharing whatever God has prepared for each one of us. And always enjoy it. When God opened the way and He gave you the opportunity to be a part of sharing His world, His kingdom, then enjoy it very much, you know? But when I enter your church, the main sanctuary just now, from, of course, the cafeteria, because Sister Vivian is so kind, preparing that fried bihun. So when I entered, I saw a big circle of people praying, you know? Wow, maybe tonight is a prayer, what do you call that, prayer meeting? And I sense it is a prayer mood and feeling atmosphere, you know? So thank you for all the intercessors that came for the prayer. I think they have been praying for many months now, right, Pastor? Very good. Continue to do that, it's powerful, man. It's powerful. Now, tonight, I change my message as I enter because I saw the group, and then it's like a... I say, "Oh, what's that, Lord?" He says, he did not mention anything, but he says, "Look." So I just look, they are praying, you know? So I know something about prayer, you know? And one of the serious thing that the intercessors and the prayerful people in the world need to do is to pray and to pray and to pray for this one. You know, when Jesus came to the earth 2,000 years ago, He says through His word that He will only do what He see the Father do. So He was very obedient to the Father. Even though He suffer in the Garden of Gethsemane, He says, "Father, if only Your will be done, take this cup." But the Father did not take it. He has to go through that pain and suffering. But He went through. He was obedient to the point of death. Now, what do we learn from here? Is faithfulness. Now, the intercessors, the prayer people, one of the prayer items that we need to pray and pray and pray until Jesus come is to pray for the people to be faithful until Jesus come. We must not waver in our faith. We must not waver in the calling that He has called us to do. If He has called us to be pastors or in the leadership, we must not waver. We must hold on until the finish line. That's what Paul says in his writing, right? We must finish the rest, and we will say, "Hallelujah!" At the end. So this is one of the things that we need to pray every day, that the ministry, the church, and the people in leadership to be faithful until the point of death. No other two ways in that. We have to be faithful. What happened if Jesus was not faithful? Halfway, eh, "Father, bye-bye." "Cabolay lah, ayah, no more." "Cannot lah, huh?" You saw and you heard Pastor Terrence, "The best specialist in the Philippine war." "Mokao chow." "No play-play, one oh." He gave up the world. He took what is from the Lord. And he went somewhere, in Thailand some of. They don't speak the language. And now they're enjoying life there until Pastor come back. He always years after years, month after month, week after week, "Fire, fire, fire." Now he go back, he prayed in the aeroplane, "Lord, let it be with us in Penang." He been praying fire, he been preaching fire. Now he got back from Thailand, "Hey, Lord, I want the fire." What does Thailand has that Penang doesn't have? Eh, we all start praying faithful, huh? We are faithful, not only fire, api usokam lah. Because api and fire same lah. You know? Faithful, we have to pray for faithfulness. Because in these last days, temptation, manipulation by the spirit of the world, compromises, and above many things. The correction of the heart not easy lah. When the heart of a person being corrected, ayah. Sakit, oh. So that's why the faithful, obedient walk with God we miss because the heart is being corrected. Who likes to be corrected in the heart here? "Oh, yeah, I am the only one." "Oh, there's many behind, ayah." "Oh, I see that that is the one that praying there just now lah." "Ah, these are the faithful people. Oh, yeah, no wonder you are raising your hand lah." "Eh, friend, good, huh?" But painful or not? Painful, many times painful, no. That's why we need to pray so that our friend, our brothers and our sisters who go through that, ah, no pain lah. Even though got pain, but they overcome it by the testimony and by the strength of the Holy Spirit lah. Amen? So that when they overcome that, we will finish the rest lah. Yeah, so that we need to pray for faithfulness. Okay, the first word. Ah, Moses, wah. The one mending the computer tonight is, he patted the Red Sea, you know? Don't play-play, man. Okay, the first word is Proverbs 20, verse 6. This is a change, renewed and transformed message tonight, is powerful. Proverbs 20, verse 6, what does it say? "Most men will proclaim each his own goodness, but who can find a faithful man?" Wow. So what does it mean is? Many people proclaim they are good. Good people, of course lah. Vivian also good, mah. She cook bihun, then chicken, fried chicken, and feed us. He knows Pastor coming tonight, he fed, he fed me, you know? But many people also blessed together lah. She cannot cook only for one pastor lah. Cook for the whole family of God here lah. So she was doing good, right? She was good. And you know what, I promote your sister little only, not big, I promote only very little. You know, I was blessed because last August, when we were here together on the fire conference, huh? Our dear sister Dorin saw my skin red one, oh. Not that I went under the sun, because we were here in the building, wah, aircon, wah, here. But I don't know, maybe I'm allergic to something, always sometimes my skin gets so red, you know? Wah, she so good, no? She came the next night, eh, gave to my daughter. No, no, not my daughter, me. I was having dinner there. She came with two bottle of cream, you know? Wah, apa ini, oh? I never wear cream one. Oh, my name is Edwin, or else I will go back, my name Edwinah. Cannot lah. But she gave me the cream, the cream, and my daughter says that she import that from Israel, no? I said, "Yeah, maybe one of the mud in Israel, I don't know." Anyway, I start wearing it, but of and on, I lazy one lah, you know? After praying, I sleep, I don't want to put anymore. I am lazy to wake up and go and see the mirror, or else here only, and then I don't put here, you know? So anyway, once in a while, I put, but my skin changes, you know? It's becoming good. Oh, my wife also compliment me. And sometime, my wife is the one who's using that already. I said, "Okay, go, go, go ahead." You know what happened, huh? When I was at the cafeteria earlier on, she came. She heard I'm coming tonight, she brought another bottle, no, ayah, this sister bagus lah. So good, huh? But this is what I'm saying. Good. You do good to people, you bless people. This is what the Bible say, doing good. You do good. It's not wrong, it's good, it's marvelous, it's beautiful. It is commanded by- It is commanded by the Lord, by the Bible. But it says, "Most men will proclaim each his own goodness." We hear everywhere, "Hey, that person good, that company good, that family is good, that church is good." Good, wonderful, nothing wrong. Praise the Lord. But important one is the next one. But who can find a faithful man? Who? Who? Way to find. Uh huh. Now you begin to understand, why are all these empty chaise? I'm not saying those people who sit there before go flying. I'm not saying that, but you see, you begin to see. Very difficult to find a faithful man. And man here means both male and female. Very difficult. That's why when I saw that group praying big circle, wow, it increased. The last August I was here, smaller. Now more. Wonderful. Pray. Now the theme, you hear this, pray for faithful men. That the church, your pastor, your leaders, your elders be faithful. Whether they face tsunami, whether they face storm in their life, they got to be faithful like Jesus. Amen? Jesus did it. He gave us an example. We have to run and finish the rest. But we need to pray for faithful people in the church. Start praying, the intercessors, start praying, "Lord, touch these people." Even anyone who come and sit on the church or the chaise, they will be faithful until the point of death like Jesus. Because the Bible says, "But who can find a faithful man?" Very difficult. Good, yes. Eh, Dorin also good, gave me cream. Eh, Vivian also good, give me fried bihon, you know. All the way I travel just to eat the fried bihon. Oh, fantastic. So thank you, pastor. You have good people around. Good! But now I want to improve that good into faithful. How to make that into faithful? Hey, intercessors, the theme, pray. Faithful, eh. Faithful, make them into faithful people. We start praying from tonight. Hey, this church, this chaise, the people who come here faithful until the point of death. They finish the rest. Hallelujah! Don't finish 2019 only. I know next year 2020, 2020, hey, no. Faithful until the finish line, man. Amen? Yes. Why we have to have faithful people in the church, in the leadership? Because the one who call us is faithful. That's why we are to be changed in the likeness of the one who call us so that we are faithful. Because he is faithful who call us. Okay, 1 Corinthians 1:9. Because the one who call us is faithful, we are to be faithful also. Look at that. 1 Corinthians 1:9. God is faithful. Hallelujah! So the children are also to be faithful, amen? "God is faithful by whom you were called into the fellowship of his son, Jesus Christ, our Lord." Eh, we are here because of his son, Jesus Christ, right? Because of the fellowship, because of the gathering, because of the worship. Pastor was earlier on saying to us, you know, "Hey, we give you all, Lord. We worship you because we love you." We are here because we love you, Lord. Hallelujah? Yeah. Then our worship song earlier on was, "Our heart holy for him." Amen? Yeah, faithful, whole. Who has 95% only tonight for Jesus? The other five is at home. No, we are all here, not 9500. God is faithful. He is the one who calls us to be here. He is the one who called Pastor Terrence. He is the one who called the leaders. Eh, not the chief minister, no. Not the ketua kampung, no. The creator of heaven and earth. He is the one who call us and he wants us to be faithful. Because he is faithful. That's why intercessors pray. In these last days, everybody will be faithful. And when we are faithful, fire, 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 fire is with us. Amen? Yeah. But pastor, I'm struggling. Yes, what kind of struggle you are going through? Many people in this world go struggling every day. But let me show you, even though if you struggle, this is the answer to that. 1 John 1:9. This is the answer to your struggle every day. Look at this, 1 John 1:9. "If we confess our sin, he is faithful and just to forgive us our sin and to cleanse us from all unrighteousness." How many righteous, unrighteousness? All means so many. "God is faithful, my brothers and sisters in the Lord, even though you committed wrong as big as the missing MH370." Is your sin bigger than that? No! But even if it is as big as the missing MH370, Jesus is faithful and just to forgive us our sin. And all unrighteousness, he is faithful to clean that from our life. Don't get cheated, deceived, and lied by the devil. "Eh, sister, I know what you did last summer." "Eh, brother, I know what you did last Christmas." You tell the devil back. "Eh, devil, I know the blood of Jesus cleansed me already lah." Tell the devil! If the devil keep on asking you, bugging you, tell him back. "Eh, devil, I know Jesus is faithful already, forgive me." You want to speak it in Chinese or what? Tell, tell him. Ah. Tell him. He only lie and deceive us. So that our heart will waver. We are not steady anymore. When we are not steady, we forget about the faith. We forget about the rest. Sayang, man. God has designed for every one of us. When Adam fell, he already planned that he will destroy the world and he will only save Noah. But after that, also problem and problem and problem because of the heart of man. But God already designed, he's going to send his son. He already designed that eternity is for us. Eh, we are enjoying this walk of life in 2019. We enjoy it now. We are running the rest. Eh, make sure you also enjoy eternal life with Jesus. Amen? How to enjoy that eternal life with Jesus is to stay faithful. Eh, if God, who is the one who call us faithful, he also faithful to forgive us our sin, why you are not faithful? Ayah, how come? Only Thailand faithful lah. Only Sarawak faithful lah. Eh, Penang also faithful lah. Yeah, Penang faithful, in Jesus' name, yeah. Yeah, all in the world is faithful because of Jesus. Amen? Yeah, that's the reason why we need one another, my brothers and sisters in the Lord. We need to encourage, edify, strengthen one another, pray for one another. And especially pray for our church, the ministry. Pray for your pastor, pray for your leaders that they are faithful. Eh, must pray, pray for Pastor Terrence more now. You heard already coming back from Thailand, "Hey, Lord, I want to bring the fire." You know kasihan, eh? He want the fire, no. Yeah, kan kasihan, no? Eh, the Lord say, "I kasihan you more. I kasihan you more. I kasihan you more." All of us would need kasihan from the Lord lah. But we pray. Faithful lah. Whatever we go through, be faithful. He is more faithful, our Lord to forgive us, right? Yeah, we are unfaithful. Many times we are unfaithful, but he is faithful to forgive our unfaithfulness. Amen? So tonight, go back, full of joy lah. Yeah, all the unfaithful, sure the Lord already cover with his blood. Remember, how big is 370? Eh, how many time your size compared to the 370? Go back to that tonight, see the mirror. Eh, you bigger. Eh, no lah, 370 bigger, so I'm covered. Yeah, you are covered by the blood. Amen? Yeah! So go back tonight, "Hey, Father, thank you. I'm covered by the blood. I'm forgiven." We are forgiven. Amen? We are forgiven. Eh, don't practice that one, "Eh, I know what you did last summer." "Eh, I know what you did last Christmas. Eh, I know." No! When that happen to come and knock at your mind, tell him, "Devil, I know the power of the blood. It covers me powerfully." "All my unrighteousness, devil, forgiven lah." Then if he doesn't understand English, talk to him in Cantonese. Ah. Yeah. Talk to him in Cantonese, the way you speak it in English or spoke it in English. Yeah. Yeah. Sometimes I tell the devil many times, you know. If he still bugging there, I talk to him in Kadasan, in Dusun, in Bahasa, in English. If cannot already, I talk to him in Tagalog, you know. Thank God, if I know Indian pastor, I will talk to him in Indian, you know. Oh, aneh! But I don't understand Indian, so I cannot speak that. I only know aneh. How I know is because somebody, when I was in the Indian shop in KL. "Eh, aneh!" I said, "What is that?" Oh, boy, boy. Younger man. Ah, brother, brother. Oh, yeah, younger, younger, because aneh. And then, oh no, aneh is older, right? Ah, tambey is the... I'm trying to change Indian, ayah, salah. Aneh is the older one, tambey is the younger one lah, yeah. But anyway, that is how you deal with him, because he always come to lie to us. And when you are lied, imagine, "Jesus cleansed us from all unrighteousness. No more. He forgotten about it." But the devil keep on reminding us. But we need to tell him point blank, "Get rid out of my life, out of my family, out of my church." So church intercessors pray for this, that our people are faithful to God, amen? Faithful in their attendance, faithful in their faith in God, amen? Give praise to Jesus. Hallelujah! Now, when he comes around and he want to keep on disturbing you, that's why we need to know the word of God. Okay, 1 Corinthians 10:13. If he keep on bugging you, he keep on disturbing you, he keep on hurting you, tell him this. 1 Corinthians 10:13. He says, "No temptation have overtaken you except such as is common to man." It's just ordinary. It's normal, okay? But God is faithful. Look at this, God is faithful. Who will not allow you to be tempted beyond what you are able? So our strength, every one of us have different level of strength. But remember this, God will not allow the devil to tame you above your strength. It is always below your strength because God wants you to overcome. And he is faithful in protecting us in that, amen? He is so good. That's why. But with the temptation, will also make the way of escape that you may be able to bear it. Not only it is below your strength, he will also open the way for you. Amen? So don't be foolish and lied by the devil. Open your understanding today, open your mind, open your eyes, open your heart. Eh, Lord, you are good, man. Even though I'm tempted, it is not above my strength. Number one. Number two, God will, he is faithful, he will open the way for me to escape. Eh, hallelujah! Amen? Yeah. So whatever you go through in life, whatever temptation, whatever difficulties, God is in control. Yeah, he will lead you escape of that situation. Hallelujah! Keep this because it will be your weapon. As you face challenges, turmoil, storm in your life, you will be able to come out of it because you have a weapon. 1 Corinthians 10:13. You have a way out. Jesus is faithful, always there providing a way for you. He is always there to make sure that you overcome the situation. Hallelujah! Jesus is good, huh? Church pray for faithfulness. Faithful. So that in the end times, not only the church will grow, your attendance will be increasing by the week and the church become strong. Faithful. Hallelujah! Yes. We start from tonight, I tell you. In due time, you will see different. Amen? Yeah. Yeah. Just continue to be faithful. Pray for faithfulness. Yeah, we work in Sabah, Sarawak, not easy, Kalimantan. Yeah. I'll be going there in December in Kalimantan in Pontianak. Our church there also in Pontianak is having Christmas and anniversary in December. So I'll be going there again. So next time, pastor, if you are ready, just let us know, we can arrange. You can bring your leaders, maybe you try, you not been to Kalimantan yet, go visit Kalimantan lah. Yeah. But I love you all to visit the place where we started last May. This church is deep in the jungle of Sarawak. You have to ride six and a half hours by speedboat, by speedboat, huh? Fast boat to that place called Punanbah. And this community is called the Penan, Penan tribes. Their language is like bird, pipi, pipi, pipi. I don't know how to say that, but but they are one of the tribes there and they have Jesus now. So I love to bring you all there and bless the people. You want to dance, dance and teach them or whatever, you know. The Lord has given into your life in the ministry. But you will love them. They are simple people, but they love the Lord, you know. Yeah. So at one time, I don't know how many months. So at one, one time, I don't know how many months ago, I brought an American, he is a puppeteer. Wah! Very easy to draw all the long houses, the children to come, you know, because he is a puppeteer, he play that. Oh, first night, not so many people, the second night, overflowing. It's the trick there. The puppet. Beautiful, but they are beautiful people. Yeah? But only careful, huh, you ride the speedboat, left, right, is a wide river. I don't know, from that end to that end, times five. Or maybe six, I don't know, but very, very wide and long. Imagine, six and a half hours by boat, you have not finished, it's only halfway. Still some more up, up, up there, you know, but not the time yet, the Lord has not opened the way there. But all the exotic food you can find there lah. Yeah, you know Urangutan, sometimes they have Urangutan. So anyway, visit and bless the people. You know? Yeah. You all city dwellers, nice here lah, cozy, so nice. Go there lah, in the night. But no malaria. Every room, they put mosquito net. So that the mosquito outside, you are inside. Okay. Wonderful, Jesus. Make sure, don't allow the enemy to lie to you, okay? There's a lot of temptation, but make sure you know the word. God will open the way out for you to escape. Hallelujah! God love us so much, amen? Yeah, he always open the way out. Maybe all this, this while you guys are struggling, maybe lah, I don't know. Then you say, "Ayah, how come Lord difficult?", eh, not difficult, ah. He will open a way for you to escape, ah. He will open the way. And then the temptation that comes, ah, it is below your strength, you know? God make sure that, because of his love. Hallelujah! So we pray for faithfulness, that the people of God will be faithful until the end, hallelujah? Yeah. It's not easy, no. But Jesus did it. And the Holy Spirit is given to help us. Hallelujah? Yeah. So wonderful, yeah. Wonderful, Jesus. Okay, 1 Timothy, chapter 1, verse 12. Hallelujah, 1 Timothy, chapter 1, verse 12, it says, "This is very important for those who have ministry." "And I thank Christ Jesus our Lord, who has enabled me, who has enabled me, who has given that enablement, that strength and whatever, because he counted me faithful, putting me into the ministry." Hello. Many of us are called. Let's hold on to that calling. Be faithful. One day, you will love the Lord to say to you, "He has enabled me and counted me faithful." Amen? Maybe Jesus was counting, you know, 1, 2, 3, Dorin, Vivian, Richard, oh, he was counting, eh, he counted you faithful, wah. Would you like to be in that numbers that Jesus counted? That's what Paul is telling Timothy here. Hallelujah! Wow! Let us all be counted faithful in the ministry. Amen? Whatever that we go through, brothers and sisters, let's hold each one of us together with prayers, so that we overcome whatever the lies, whatever the challenge that we face in this world. Husband and wife, pray. Pray. Husband, pray for your wife, wife, pray for your husband, that we are able to overcome whatever it is. And we are able to say at the end of the day, at the end of the line, "He has enabled me and counted me faithful." Hallelujah! Many of you have been toiling, toiling the land, toiling in the ministry, you know? Let's hold on. Prayer team, always pray. Faithful, faithful, faithful. And one day, not only prayer team will say that, you will say that to the Lord himself. "I thank you, Lord, that you enabled me and you have counted me faithful." Amen? So imagine, prayer team. If you have done this praying, and many will say to the Lord, "You have counted me faithful." You did it, man. You have prayed, man. And when you, one day, come and meet with the Lord, this is the husband, this is the wife, this is the children. And the Lord is so pleased. But again, we say, "Lord, thank you for enabling us and counting us faithful." Hallelujah! Imagine, if your pastor, your leaders also, in their difficult times, challenging times, in their emotions, sometimes pastor, they know how to make up, no? I'm telling this through experience, eh. Not, not your pastor, me, myself, no. Sometime, we know how to make up, you know? Eh, how are you pastor? Eh, good! Wah, deep inside, like rojak, but good! Wah! Eh, the pastor good, ah, oh, yeah, good, but deep inside. Huh? Angkung belacan, no? Huh? But they know how to make up. Why are they doing that? They want to tell the people, "We are okay." But really, it's not okay. That's why prayer team, pray for faithfulness. In America today, many has fallen. Not that we want to exalt that story, no. But it's a reality. And we don't want that. That is a deception, lie and work of the enemy. Any one of us, children of God, if we fall, the heart of God bleed, the body of Christ in the world also pain. Amen? Yeah. Let's hold hand together in prayers, always. Yeah? So that this race of faith, we can endure and we can finish it until the finish line, successfully. Telling the Lord, "Lord, thank you for enabling me and thank you, Lord, for counting me faithful." And church, prayer people, we do this, we pray and pray for faithfulness upon our church, our ministry here. I believe our Lord will hear and answer. Because he cannot go against his word. He says, "Call unto my name and I will do it." Amen? We just pray into his name. He says he will do it, John 14, verse 13 and 14. Right? He will answer us. Pray. We are faithful until the end. Amen? Now, pastor, why you keep on saying faithful, faithful, what do we get when we are faithful? Oh, yeah, you get a lot of thing. You get a lot of thing. Let's read that. Proverbs 28, verse 20. Ah, "You are blessed if you are faithful." Yeah? So pray for faithful, we are in these last days, you know? You know next year, 2020, ah? I call it the double. Next year will be the double. Double in your ministry, double in your anointing or whatever, you know, God call you. Next year will be double. But if we don't, we are not faithful, how can you receive the double? Eh, let's go for the double, amen? 2021. Two times, 2-0, 2-0. Double. Next year is double. "A faithful man will abound with blessing." Very straightforward. Even the Sunday school teachers very good to explain that, right? Very clear. "A faithful man is abound with blessing," means to say, "if you are faithful, the blessing is overflowing in your life," or abound, no? Overflowing, wah. You are not running for the blessing, the blessing is falling, falling and falling and falling, oh. Do you like that? Yeah. We like it. "But he who has done to be rich will not go unpunished." Ah, the one who always want, oh, work, work, work something. Even Sunday, he forget God, or don lah, huh? Be faithful on Sunday lah, huh? Be faithful, look at Brother Richard, faithful lah. Amen? Ah, be faithful. So if we stay faithful, God promise, you abound in blessing. What sort of blessing? There are many. Good health is also a blessing. Yeah? Peaceful, joyful, good relationship, good attendance, is also blessing. Amen? So you name it, what blessing that you can think of? It's yours. You abound, wah. Overflowing, wah. It's yours. It's ours, because we stay faithful. Now, it's not easy to be faithful. When you hear some word, sometime, it hurts you. It offends you. So offenses sometime is not good. As I said earlier on, correction of the heart also sometime not good. And sometime, many in the family also. Eh, I don't like you to cook like this lah, but you still cook that way. "I did it my way." That's why a lot of problem in the family, because they do it their own way, wah. So that's why, a lot of happening. Not only in the church, in the family, many things happening, no. But stay faithful. I'm gonna give you this last one, and I'm going to explain it, so that you can go back and you can think. Isaiah 61, verse 11. Yeah. This verse, I love to share, because it teaches a lot of good things to build us inside. To build inside. Not the makeup outside. Makeups are outside, but this one is to build inside. It says, "For as the earth brings forth its buds, as the garden causes the things that are sown in it to spring forth, so the Lord God will cause righteousness and praise to spring forth before all the nations." Now, if you want to read this just like that, very difficult to understand, huh? Okay, let me explain in the easy way. It says, "For the earth brings forth its bud." Whatever on the earth, after it rains, there are buds shooting out. Whether it's grass, tons, and then suddenly, if you are not the cleanest type of person on earth, ah. Sorry. You makan the langsat, the langsohnes, and then you throw the sida. Eh, after sun and then the rain, it shoot, you know? Oh, you are the not the cleanest person, you throw the rambutan sida. It shoot. Oh, the famous musangking. It throw, it also shoot the buds, right? Whatever that is under the sun and got watered under the earth or covered by the earth, it will buds. Because the seed will crack and it will look for the sun, wah, will come up. That's what it mean. "For as the earth brings forth its bud, as the garden causes the things that are sown in it to spring forth." Whatever you plant and then you water, it will grow. Amen? Sure? Yes. Now, let us learn. This is teaching in the inside, our character, our heart. Anything that is covered by earth and watered, that is what we call mud. Say, if we want to make Sister Vivian a guinea pig tonight, we bring her in front, we cover her with earth, and then we tuang the water, huh? We pour the water on the earth, mud lah, madi. Or even Dorin for the matter, because Dorin is the makeup wanna, makeup, ah. Beauty lah, beauty, then suddenly, all the mud one lory on top of her, huh? Then pour the water, become mud lah. Eh, sticky, you don't like it, right? Uneasy. Dirty, you feel, it's not good. This is what happened to every one of us when we face problem, challenges and difficulties in life. We feel uneasy. Not good, because the water and the earth, the mud in us, we feel not good. That's the time we retaliate in ministry, in family, in business, in all whatever vocation that we are. When we face challenges, trial, problem and difficulties, we don't lie. But let me assure you tonight. In that situation, I give you two option. One, you are to be planted. Anything that you plant according to this word, it will shoot, it will grow. I give you the second option, buried. So you want to be buried in your problem and challenges and situation of your life, you are buried. I tell you, you go to the cemetery. R.I.P. Rest in peace, no growth! No growth, no success, no nothing. Then you put at the end, "F forever." Rest in peace forever, nothing, zero! My brothers and sisters in the Lord, I want to encourage you tonight. If you are under the mud and the water, grow. Grow in your challenges, grow in your difficulties, grow in the problem that you face. You will shine. It says, "So the Lord will cause righteousness and praise to spring forth before all nation." Because if you grow in your problem, if you grow in your difficulties, wherever God send you, you will bring the righteousness of God and you will make the nation praising him. You will make the nation darkness in that nation, you will bring that nation to praise Jesus. Because when you go through your challenges, instead of being buried, you choose to grow. You choose to be You choose to be planted. Church, be faithful and be planted wherever you are. Because you will grow and wherever you are, you will bring the righteousness of God and you make people praising Him. And that's why Jesus came to die for us. So that you have the righteousness of the Lord and you bring people, you bring nations praising God. And when Terrence invited me to Baguio, I said, "Lord, thank you. But I need to confirm some, something because of my schedule." You know why? He is going to nation, your church is going to nations. And that's biblical. You are making nation praising the Lord. The devil is so defeated, you know? Hallelujah! That's why sometimes we face challenges and trial because God want you to bring that righteousness and you want, He wants you to make the people nations to praise Him. Amen? Be faithful. In your trials and challenges, tribulation of your life, maybe your church, maybe your family, stay faithful. Be planted and not buried, eh? Be planted, do something. It will come out. Hallelujah! Yeah! Do something means you pray, at least you pray, "Lord, help me in this." He will raise you up again. Because He wants you to be righteous, going places and bringing nations to praise His name and His kingdom. Hallelujah! Stay faithful, my brothers and sisters. And the prayer warriors, pray that our church and ministry here, the people will grow faithful. Yeah! It doesn't matter how many now, it doesn't matter. He will bring the increase. Because naturally says, it will bring it buds. It will shoot, it will grow. Amen? God will do that. Hallelujah! Can you bow down? I'm gonna pray tonight. Oh, Jesus, He is here. Oh, thank you. Lord, many a times, we do not understand. In our own life, family, ministry, leadership, we don't understand. The tendency we do always is to complain, mama. Because we don't understand. But tonight, you visited us with understanding through your word. Many good people in this world, but where to find faithful men? Lord, bless us. Touch our heart, our lives tonight. That we are the one, the faithful one, that you're gonna bring and use us until the end. Lord, do it in our life, in our family, in the leadership of our church. Do it, Lord. You have seen your people toiling the earth, the ministry. I pray, Lord, strengthen them. Open the way of escape for them. If they do not understand this, show it to them, Lord. Even through dreams, vision, through your word. And Lord, thank you. That in all our mistake, in all our shortcomings, in all our weakness, maybe we complain, maybe mama, maybe we argue, maybe even we fight among ourselves. Father, you say in your word, you are faithful and just to forgive all our sin and to cleanse all our unrighteousness. Lord, help us. Forgive and cleanse each one of us from all our unrighteousness and wrong, our disobedience, our argumentative mind and mouth and heart and our reaction to one another, even among us in the leadership, even among us, husband and wife, children. Forgive us, Lord. And I thank you, Lord, that you said, "You are faithful and just to forgive us of all our unrighteousness, to cleanse all our unrighteousness and to forgive our sins." Thank you, Lord. Father, help us to walk this life every day. Enabling us to overcome. And we can say to you, "Thank you, Lord, for counting me faithful." Yes! Count us in that group of faithful people in you, Lord. Count us. And Lord, whatever the unbearable trial, challenges, tribulation, even maybe persecution, Father, help us. That in all of that, we should upload, we grow day by day in the strength of our Lord. So that you can bring forth in us the righteousness. Wherever you send us, wherever you put us, nations will come and praise you. Father, use us. Make us grow in whatever difficulties, challenges in our life. Make us grow. Plant us, Lord, in that, that we will grow. We will shoot up. Help us, Lord, to understand that whatever we go through in life, help us to understand, not to be buried with it. But help us to come out, to grow and be your righteousness. Wherever we are, to bring nations and people to praise you, Lord. Father, impart this tonight to each one of us. Impart, Lord, impart. Yes, Lord, let it be received in every hearts and let them grow. Let them grow. Let them grow. Oh, Father, I thank you. I bless you, Lord. I bless you.
You know, tonight is just a confirmation of what God has been speaking to us in this past season about His covenant. That He's a covenant God. And God has said this to us, that when we are faithful, He will make us fruitful. Our part is to remain faithful. His part is to make us fruitful. That's why it says that a faithful man, a faithful woman will abound with blessings. Faithfulness is not just only in the ministry, but faithfulness is in our marriage, in our relationship, in our businesses, in our works, in everything that we do and especially in our character and our truthfulness before God. Living a life of truth, living a life of transparency, living a life of accountability, living a life of responsibility. All these are part of faithfulness. And when we are faithful, the Lord says, in His promise, He'll make us fruitful. And so, we thank the Lord for tonight, that He has reminded us again. On our part, if we play our part, He will do His part. So let us keep on encouraging one another and edifying one another and praying for one another. That we will always be rooted in the faithfulness of Christ. That we will always be faithful in all things, in big things and in small things. That we are always faithful because God want us to be fruitful. Lord, we thank you for tonight. We thank you for your word tonight, Lord. We thank you that you love us so much, that you have so much. You want us to abound in your blessings, in your good things, in your great things, Lord, in your glorious things, in your wonderful things. They are too wonderful to mention in words, Lord. And we thank you that we are in the season of receiving that. And all you ask of us, Lord, is to position our heart and to root ourselves in faithfulness, in anticipating all that you have for us, Lord. Lord, bless us tonight. Lord, we ask that you give us a good rest tonight. And Lord, we thank you that we are in the season of fruitfulness. We bless you, Lord, in this, in Jesus's name. Amen?